Not my name on it. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Welcome to the city council meeting of April the 12th. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you read the roll call, please?
Mr. Cannon.
Here.
Mr. Shyland.
Present.
Mr. Moore.
Present.
Ms. Pace Snook.
Present.
Ms. Reclu.
Present.
Mr. Schibberdecker.
Here.
Mr. Vaughn.
There.
And Mr. West.
Here.
Eight council members present.
Very good. Thank you. You'd all rise with me, please. Pastor Bruce Williamson is with us this evening. He will lead us in the invocation.
Let's pray together. Our heavenly Father, we rejoice and give you thanks for the blessings of a beautiful day, for the privilege we have to gather again as community, and for the servants who meet to do the people's work. We're grateful, Lord, for our mayor and council persons. And again, Lord, I want to thank you for all the people that lead this city and keep us moving forward. I especially pray tonight for the solid waste people. I've watched them these last couple of days working so hard in the city cleanup, our spring cleanup, and I just pray for their safety as they do a lot of heavy lifting to keep our city progressing and taking care of our families and our homes. In addition, Lord, I pray that you'll bless this April as schools come to a close and may outside activities increase in the community, and that puts extra responsibilities on all of our public safety officers and parks and recreation and all the city facilities that allow our families to enjoy the outdoors during the spring and summer. We continue to pray for those that we love within the city family, and this would include but not be limited to Mrs. Bush-Joe's and Mr. Polston's son, Chief Myers, Mr. and Mrs. Reclu, Bill Laswell, Mr. Shyland, and all of the other city folks who need your touch from day to day. Bless this session tonight and all the work that will be done here, that the decisions that are made will be made pleasing to you. We pray this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As always, Pastor, thank you. At the beginning of each council meeting, we set aside a time for any citizen who has a concern that they'd like to bring to the city, before the city council, to do that, and we only ask that you give us your name and your address and let it your comments to five minutes of which that time will be monitored by the city clerk. So at this time, is there anyone present who'd like to address the council about a concern they have? Seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on to presentation and approval of the council minutes from March 22nd. Those are included in your packet. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, I entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Very good. I have a motion second to approve the minutes from March 22nd meeting. Any further discussion?
I just have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
When we entered executive session and exited executive session last meeting, it says we voted present. I don't understand that.
It's a roll call. That simply all means it's just a roll call.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good. Thank you. Do we have any unfinished business that? None on the agenda? None of you have anything? We'll move on. Very good. We, it's now time for a resolution, of which we have one. Councilman Schibberdecker, would you please present? Please present Resolution 3252, which is a resolution outlining the results of the April 5th election.
Yes, sir. Resolution number 3252. Whereas a general election for the city, office of the city council was held in the city of Fulton, Missouri, on the 5th day of April 2016, and whereas the county clerk of Calhoun County, Missouri, has certified to the city clerk the results of the city general election held on the above date, and whereas the council finds the following votes were cast to it. Question: Shall the city of Fulton, Missouri be authorized to impose a sales tax of one-half of 1% for the purpose of providing funding for storm water control and local parks and recreation? Yes votes, 792. No votes, 479. For city council, First Ward, Mike West, 323 votes. Second Ward, Mary Reclu, 119 votes. Third Ward, Lindsey Pace Snook, 87 votes. Beverly Gray, 190 votes. Fourth Ward, Steve Moore, 156 votes. Helen Jarvis, 126. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Fulton, Missouri as follows. Section 1, that the council finds that the stormwater, excuse me, and recreation sales tax question passed. Section 2, that the council finds that the following officers were elected, and the city clerk is hereby instructed to issue them the proper certificates and commissions. For city council, First Ward, Mike West. Second Ward, Mary Reclu. Third Ward, Beverly Gray. Fourth Ward, Steve Moore. This resolution adopted this day of April 2016.
Very good. Thank you. Do I have a second? Second. We have a motion and a second to?
I make a motion this resolution be adopted at this meeting.
Thank you very much. And I assume your second stands?
Yes.
We did this, okay, I have a second and a motion to adopt a Resolution 3252. Is there any further discussion of that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good. Thank you. Resolution 3252 is adopted. Thank you very much. Now move on to ordinances. It looks like we have one remaining. Previous council, a second reading ordinance. Councilman Shyland, Bill Number 1447 has to do with the sewer improvements of a subdivision in the community. Would you please present that for a second, or title on it?
Unless there's objection, I'll read the second and third.
Okay.
Bill Number 1447, an order except for the Osmond County sewer improvement of the Hummer subdivision. Move the bill Number 1447. Be moved, third final reading at the ninth meeting.
Second.
Very good. Thank you. I have a motion and a second to advance Bill Number 1447. Is there any further discussion of this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Councilman Shyland, would you please present Bill 1447, third reading?
Third reading, Bill Number 1447. An order except for the Osmond County sewer improvement of the Hummer subdivision. Move the bill Number 1447, be voted on and approved at the ninth meeting.
Second.
Thank you. I've got a motion and a second to advance for final Bill Number 1447. Is there any further discussion? Again. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. You've heard Bill Number 1447 presented three times, and it's now time for final decision making. Please answer the roll as the clerk reads it, yes or no.
Mr. Shyland?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Pace Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Mr. Schibberdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
And Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Eight council members affirmative.
Thank you. Bill Number 1447 is adopted. We will now recess the council and for swearing, and then we'll come, we'll swear in the new officials, and then we'll, we'll come back in and after we take some pictures, so hopefully the camera man's ready. Stand or three seconds. Very good. Thank you. I reconvene us. We're back in order again. Again, welcome and congratulations to all the newly elected officials, and we thank you for your prior service to the city and continue to look forward to your, our working relationships in the future. At this time, consider the council rules of order and procedures. Those are included in your council packet. Let Courtney kind of go over there. I think she's made a couple changes to those. She'll address those with you.
Sure. Actually, the only change that we made this time around, we added under Article 4, Section 4.01. We now included the council concerns section that we've been doing for a couple meetings now. You'll see that's item number 10. And that's the only change.
Yeah.
Move for acceptance.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second for acceptance of the rules of order. Any further discussion of that motion?
Just, it's sort of related, but I know we had talked about a couple months ago about when we changed the, the order of things with the adding the council concerns, it would also be convenient to move the work orders, or the work sessions to the end of our work session meetings instead of at the beginning. I don't know if everyone would agree with that or not, but if it's a short work session, that would get us out of here quicker and not have a 30-minute downtime between meetings, as well as if it's longer, we could keep discussing whatever it was.
I think Lyle's got a good point there, and we need to consider it. I'll go ahead and vote on it. Can you make a motion on that, Lyle?
Uh, sure.
I'll second your motion.
Your motion is to add a work session at the end of the meeting rather than at the beginning?
Right.
Well, not add, but if it's a work session night, yeah, switch that around.
Because it's not, it, work sessions aren't even mentioned, as I see.
Right. And it's not, I mean,
I don't believe it.
It's not really part of this actual.
Format.
Yeah.
So we don't, we don't start the business meetings at 6:30?
Right.
If we had a work session, it'd follow immediately?
Immediately after.
Okay. Be at 7:00.
I mean, this may not be an appropriate time to talk about it, but I thought it was.
So you're going to move the council meetings to 6:30 then?
Always.
Every night.
Right.
And then the work sessions.
All the time.
Okay.
Okay. Everybody understands what we're talking about? I have a motion and a second on the floor to change the work sessions to the end of the meeting. Is there any further discussion of that motion?
I have a question.
Sure.
Is your motion, you're going to do the work session, but if the council meeting runs long, you're going to skip the work session?
No.
No.
I don't think that was on the table, but I guess at the, at the time of the night, if it was running real long and everybody didn't want to stay, I guess we could change it up at that time. That would give us that option, though, Steve. I mean, it really would.
Work session would follow immediately after the council meeting, whatever time that is.
You're just going to add a second, another section then?
Does mean section? Take care of it.
Section 1.01 already says that we're going to meet every third, second Tuesday and fourth Tuesday at 6:30 PM.
Right.
So that sort of covers it still?
It would be immediately following the council. We'll just add the verbage in. Okay. If there's not any discussion, I will call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good. Work sessions will be at the end for a while. And again, I just remind you, councils' rules of order and procedures can always be changed by council. If for some reason we don't like that, then we go on to that. Okay, our next item on the agenda is the election of the deputy mayor, and I'll open the floor for nominations for deputy mayor.
Mr. Mayor, nomination, I'd like to nominate Richard Vaughn for deputy mayor.
Very good. Richard. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion with, they close.
Second.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Tag, you're it.
Tag, yeah.
Oh, there you go.
You did that once before.
He wanted to be on again.
We didn't want you to sneak out, Richard. Very good. We have a motion on the floor to elect Richard Vaughn as the deputy mayor for the next year.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And of course, and the motion was made to elect Richard by acclamation. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, very good.
Mr. Mayor.
Congratulations, Richard. You've been Leroy Robert one more time.
I can change my sign.
Yes.
Did we vote for the rules of order and procedure? I think we voted for the change, but.
Yeah, that was a little, little weird.
Oh, my God.
Did we vote for? We had a motion, then we had another motion. Oh, okay.
Sorry.
But Leroy voted it back, that it was the rules of order, and the rules of order are addressed.
Okay.
I'll let you guys make the call.
Okay, Courtney?
I think we all understand.
If you're comfortable with it?
We can do another motion if you're unconvinced.
No, we're good.
It's fine. Thanks, Courtney.
Very sure.
Yep.
That's what we pay you for.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Good evening, representatives. We'll now move on to new business, and representatives are with us from the county library district. Someone would like to present to us? We'd sure appreciate listening.
Thanks for having us.
Well, we thank you for all the good work you do. I darken your door quite often.
That's great to know.
So I definitely appreciate you.
Good deal. Well, I'm Tanya Hayes Martin, and I serve as the president currently for the Callaway County Library District, which is part of the Daniel Boone Regional Library System. And we want to say congratulations to the new councilwoman and to the re-elected councilmen. We also want to congratulate the city of Fulton on passing this sales tax for the parks and stormwater. It's really encouraging to us to see that Fulton is a progressive community willing to invest in their future. And.
You're here.
Thank you especially for letting us talk to you tonight because it's National Library Week, so we didn't think there was a better time. Now, I'd like to introduce the other board members and some important staff members of Daniel Boone Regional Library. Will you stand, please? First, Mike Lubert, board member. Mary Fennel, board member. Terry Eggers, and Jean Howard. The five of us, I'm glad to report we're all here. Library Director Melissa Carr. Callaway County Manager Greg Reeves. And PR Manager Mitzi Saint John. Well, thanks for having us all. At this time, I'm going to turn the floor over to my partner in crime, Mike Lubert, and I'll be back.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, administrators, and citizens. You'll be happy to know that we're not here to ask you for money. We're here to brag a little bit about your library. The Daniel Boone Regional Library was established in 1908 by a group of ladies that got together for a reading room. In 1912, the Andrew Carnegie Foundation, along with matching funds from citizens of Fulton, $20,000 each, founded and built the building that presently stands, which is on the National Historical Register. This building continued to be a library, as it still does. At the west side of, we had an addition in 1984, and a remodeling project was completed in 2004. The library, as you see on the screen up there, some of the stats that we are pretty proud of. In 2015, 103,811 people visited or made use of the library. 151,807 items were placed in circulation, and 119 community groups used our friends' room for meetings. And we know a lot of people can't always come to the library here in Fulton, so we try to make it easy for people to use the library in other ways. Our large bookmobile gets, goes to Avos and Holt Summit, and our bookmobile junior travels to licensed childcare centers where it visits many preschoolers who wouldn't be able to check out library books otherwise. In Holt Summit, we established a library-to-go locker system where our library users can pick up books, DVDs, music CDs, as they've requested, rather than have to wait for the bookmobile to come around or to visit the facility here in Fulton. Each summer, we have a Books by Snail program that preschoolers in the county can participate in. Those students that attend Avos, Hatton, Holt Summit, Kingdom City, Mokane, and New Bloomfield and Williamsburg are eligible to participate in that program. And due to the excellent work of our staff, we have drastically increased our website, so there's a lot of services that can be available there. Pardon me. In serving the community of 44,000 citizens in the county, give or take a few, based on a 2014 community survey, 96% of the people participating in the survey think libraries are important. 94% are satisfied with the service provided by the staff. 88% satisfied with library services, 85. 77% satisfied with the value of the services received for their tax dollars. And here, I'd really like to brag on our system because the Callaway County tax rate, as improved by voters, is 20 cents per hundred dollars in valuation compared to Boone County of 30.91 cents and the city of Columbia of 31.14 cents. So the citizens of Callaway County are really getting a bang for their buck. One of our missions is to get children ready to succeed in school. We offer learning programs. Our computers for children come loaded with games, science programs, and we have interactive play areas in our library. That being said, I'm going to give it back to Tanya.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, and the library's just not only about educating and entertaining kids, because we all know learning shouldn't end when you graduate from school. We encourage all of our citizens to continue learning throughout their lifetime, whether it's to learn new job skills, or just for personal enjoyment, taking a language course. In addition to offering programs at the library, we offer a lot of online learning opportunities that folks can access there at the library using one of our computers or our Wi-Fi connection. And people can also take advantage of these free online resources at home, on their phones, or tablets, or computers. All it takes is a free library card that adults can also apply for online. So if you can't make it to the library, doesn't mean you can't use the library. Okay. Why am I on the screen? Am I slide? So, I'm going to start to talk about one of the online, the great online learning resources we have. It's called Learning Express Library. And again, you can use it at the library, or on the go, or at your home. And it has education for everybody from elementary school through adult. You can sharpen your math skills, which I should probably take advantage of. You can take a test to practice for the ACT. It just provides a wide range of, are we, oh, we're almost there. Online tests, skill-building courses, and eBooks. Learning centers that are included, or, thank you, adult learning. All those things I talked about, career, you can explore careers. You can take practice exams. School, elementary through high school stuff to help the kids learn. College prep, you can take free ACT practice tests, and then also study for high school equivalency. So there's something there for everybody. I've used it, and it's fabulous. So there's the Learning Express Library. That's what it looks like when you go to it from the Daniel Boone Regional Library page. And now some other new website services. Within the last couple of years, we've added these online services. Xenio is a magazine service, and you can read up to 150 magazines that the library subscribes to. And again, in the library or at home, or on the go with your device. Really, super cool. And we'll even teach you how to do it. Yes. And then there's Hoopla, which I think is just fabulous. Movies, comics, audiobooks. What else am I forgetting on there? TV shows and eBooks. And then another thing, we have Lynda.com and Universal Class, which again is some lifelong learning resources. And Lynda.com is one of our most popular online resources. You've probably heard about this. A business can buy a subscription to Lynda.com, lots of businesses do, to help, you know, with their training. But through the library, people and citizens and businesses can use it for free. And you can learn about so many things. It's well worth exploring. And the next, Universal Class. This is really cool. It's a small sampling on the screen there that you can see of more, of the more than 500 classes you can take through this. And so everything from accounting to web development. If you want to learn, we can help. And then other ways we help. The online services can be used by individuals, but they can certainly help businesses too. You received a flyer in your packet that lists all the ways the library can help businesses in more detail. And we hope that you'll help us promote that to the local. We really appreciate your help in that. And just on screen is a quick review. We can help with business forums, training, continuing education, research, business publications, and reference materials. And next, we have a really cool slide. This is a word cloud array. And it's, these are words that were taken from a community survey. And the words that appear the largest are the ones that were used most often. So this is what people in Fulton and Calhoun, you know, think about the Daniel Boone Regional Library system. You can see the big words, great, excellent, helpful, good, friendly, wonderful, awesome, which we, of course, love to hear. And we think Callaway County and Fulton are also great, excellent, helpful, good, friendly, wonderful. So now, what are we up to at the library? We're always up to something. Right now, we're working on the next strategic plan. We don't do things willy-nilly at the Daniel Boone Regional Library. We are very careful planners and make the, most of the resources that were provided through the taxpayers, not even. So we're starting to gather information in preparation for writing this plan. And we're very interested in hearing from you and from the citizens about what you think our community and county needs are going to be in the future. And we'd like to know about any specific ideas on how you think that the library can address some of those needs. We are not going to ask you to take time to do that now, but please feel free always to contact any of the board members or the library director, Melissa Carr. And we'll also be contacting other groups in the area and asking them these same questions as well. So, thank you again for letting us speak to you about your public library today during National Library Week. It's also National Library Card Sign-Up Month. And we invite you, if you don't already have one, we know you do, Mayor, to apply for a library card if you don't already have one. Please go check out what the library has for you. We just wanted to share with you some of, all of the great things we're doing in the community, and now we're glad to answer any questions you may have for us.
With the online staff.
With the online stuff, do you track the usage of that so you can sort of justify the tax dollars and see what gets used?
Absolutely. We get a statistical report at every monthly board meeting that tracks circulation of all of the materials. And, and they give us very detailed information. Yes, and we'd be glad to share any of those statistics with you easily grabbed.
Do, do I need a library card or any login to get into the online portion of the library?
Yes. You just need your library card. And you can apply for it online, so, and they'll send it to you. So you'll just need your number and then you'll have a PIN, which is usually really easy to remember. But yes, that's what you need is your library card. And I hope you'll apply for one. That would really make this worthwhile. Any other, oh, hey, look at that!
I don't have it on. I don't have mine with me, but I use it.
I know, Mike, you've been a longtime supporter of the library.
Exactly. We use the library very much.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you very much, you and the board for coming out and explaining all you do. Now, I dart into your doors once in a while, but I'm learning to offer a lot of services. Stick around, Mommy.
Well, thank you for having us. We sure appreciate the time.
And one question that I've been asked many times, and I know the answer, but I'm going to... So what's with all the semis parked outside the building?
Oh, well, they're gone now. We had to bring those in to move the collection and furniture out from upstairs. And we got new carpet, which we saved for and planned for. And it's in now, so then we unloaded and, and put everything back in and the semis are gone. Got our parking back and everything's back in, in even better shape than it was before. So please come down and take a look at the new carpet.
It's a beautiful facility.
Yes, it is.
Something to be proud of.
It's something to be proud of, and I think we're especially lucky to be a part of the bigger Daniel Boone Regional Library system.
Exactly.
Because we can share those great resources and stuff. And hats off to the staff, the director and staff of the library. They're really our shining stars, the face to the public, and they rock.
There you go.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming. It's very informative.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. I can't believe you're not going to stay the rest of the meeting.
Come on, Mike.
Oh, yeah, he's been here.
I know he has. Thank you for your service. Okay, let's move on. We'll now consider the street fair that's going to be happening on June the seventeenth and eighteenth. I believe Dawn Smith is with us this evening. And we'll be glad to listen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to come here tonight and speak on behalf of the Fulton Street Fair Committee members. I am, my name is Dawn Smith. I'm the chairperson of the street fair this year. Janelle passed the buck. What we would like to do is request a formal approval of the city council to hold the street fair on June seventeenth and eighteenth, two thousand and sixteen. I met earlier today with some of the city officials to kind of go over the logistics and things like that. So hopefully that we got all that ironed out. We also, just like in years past, we do have a check for three hundred dollars because you guys do provide the police at our parade. I would like to ask, is there any other needs that you guys have that we need to budget for?
Myself and the appropriate department heads met, met with Dawn this morning for probably at least half an hour, maybe a little longer. We went over the list in detail, in great detail. We did have, I don't know if you want to know any of the changes we made or anything, but I think when, at the end of the meeting, the city is thrilled for the number of volunteers and the number of volunteer hours that go into making this a great activity for Fulton and Callaway County. We're, so we're, we're pleased to provide the help that we do. And if there's any questions on any of the changes, I'll go over them if you want that. Pretty much everything they need.
Are we going to dig a pit at the motor park?
We are.
Yes, and we're expanding the tug-of-war this year. We're actually going to have an amateur and a business class. So there'll be a few more people down there participating in that. It was quite a success last year. People are still talking about it a year later.
So we'll be able to restore the...
Clay said they did it last year and they were able to get it back, put together and seat it up again.
Okay.
It wasn't any big deal.
I guess I missed it. Want to wear it?
I do have some, just a tentative agenda for the street fair. You'll see on the agenda that the bands aren't listed yet. We're still finalizing those, so it just says banned. So stay tuned. We do have some good bands booked yet, but we're still waiting on a few yet. So a few of the new events for this year's, we're going to bring back, some of you may remember, the hot air balloons. We're going to bring back a balloon glow for this year, for Friday night. So that'll be really exciting for everyone. We're also bringing back the brick skating again this year. That was a huge success last year. Very important for Callaway County. And so we're going to, we're bringing that back this year. So stay tuned for the events of that. We're going to do the event like we did last year of moving the bricks back and forth, so. Strengthen your back between now and June seventeenth, so be a part of that. We would, I would like to invite all of the city council members to participate in the button drawings on Friday and Saturday night. We would love to have you represent the city in doing that, if you guys are available. Yes, if you guys will just let me know, so I can make sure to have you prepare for which night.
If I am a vendor, what is it going to cost me for a slot?
For the vendor? Janelle, do you know what the vendor fee is?
Or is it for a food or is it for, for...
Crabs. Per day? All week in a day.
Say as long as the staff is cool with this, I hope we are moved that we accept this.
My concern is this enough to reimburse the city for the waste and the utilities that will be used during that?
I guess my answer to that would be, there's a lot of volunteers donating a lot of time and effort. It's, it's a community-wide event. Everybody from the community and the businesses throughout the community will also benefit from having the several thousand visitors come to the community over this weekend.
But if I'm a vendor and I'm plugging my display into our utilities, is this going to be enough to cover that?
We, we have never charged for the reimbursement of the electricity. Kind of the way we do it would be very difficult to do that unless it was some just predetermined amount. But like I said, we look at the benefits of the community by bringing all these people to town, doing some additional shopping and having, having a good time and enjoying life in Fulton as the payment.
I'm being instructed to, to let you guys know that the Board of Tourism is involved this year and they're going to be promoting the Fulton Street Fair for us and some of the publications this year. So that's exciting stuff on the air for us. So hopefully that'll bring in more attendance this year than it has in the past.
I'll also point out, if you look at the second page, we're listed as one of the gold level sponsors. So I mean, it's kind of one of the things we do.
Yes, and we appreciate that immensely. It, it's not just the committee members that puts this on. It's the city of Fulton. We can't do it without you.
And, and that, we're going to continue raising that to a platinum level and this table will be moving in that one to be a better.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
And had, and fully by that time, I think we're, to be a platinum level vendor would be to donate services of a thousand dollars or more. And you guys, with all the volunteer hours and everything that is submitted, that would definitely be a better.
Very good. Thank you. I have a motion in the second to approve this event. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good. We'll have a street fair again.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Look forward to coming out June sixteenth and seventeenth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate all your efforts. We know it's a big task. Okay, we'll now move on to item C of new business, which has to do with the County Foster Parent Program, having a 5K walk on May the twenty-eighth. Ms. Becker here. Welcome.
Well, thank you so much for allowing us to come tonight. My name is April Becker and I'm here to represent the Callaway County Foster Parent Association. I am a foster parent in Callaway County. We are hoping to host our very first annual 5K run to help benefit foster parents in our circuit. Our circuit includes Boone and Callaway County. We know Boone County has a whole lot of resources. And over in Callaway County, for us foster parents, there really aren't as many. And so we, we feel like it's pretty important to get that going. I was just told that we have around four hundred and fifty kids in foster care in Callaway and Boone County combined. That's a big number for a few foster families.
I just want to note that when we bring children into care and we say four hundred and fifty kids are here, that includes relative placement, community placement, and licensed foster homes in the state. However, they're busting at the seams. We have three times a day, can't find placement. So when we can't find placement...
Come up here.
When we can't find placement in Callaway County for the children that reside in this county, that means we have to move them outside of the county, place them in other counties. Maybe thirteen days, fifty-four hours away, just depends where the openings are. So in order to keep children in their own counties, and that's very important in the Fourteenth Circuit, is to keep our children in their local communities, that we have put together what we call a recruitment retention committee to recruit more foster homes than retain the ones we have. So the foster parents of the Thirteenth Circuit is asking to, we'll have to run in April. We'll talk to you about that. But that's the importance of this and that's the mission that is driving this run. You know, because when we move them outside of the county, outside of their town, then they get new schools and homes, so there's lots of changes and adjustments. So that is a big drive behind what we're doing here.
So we have been working on this project for quite a while and thought, okay, where in our circuit can we have this? And even the more and more we talked, and I've run the Stinson Trail quite a few times myself, not that you could tell, but I said, that would be a great place to have it. So let's just have it right here in Fulton and let that be our central location for that. So we have been looking at, we had tentatively planned it for May twenty-eighth. And since then, we've learned we'd have to move that date back to September twenty-fourth. And we have talked with...
I've talked to Parks and Recreation, kind of there in agreement with September twenty-fourth. And I also want to note that Chief Myers, and I have visited, he's reviewed the trail. And I'm aware of the change tonight of the date, and I think we're still approved correct.
So we're looking at using the same route that the Turkey Trot uses, if you're familiar with that at all, where we would start at the pavilion down by the splash pad and follow that little route. So we are hoping that you all would consider letting us have the pavilion and the trail at no cost since our run is going to be exclusively to benefit the foster parents of Callaway County. We are not charging a fee for the entrance, entrance fee into the run. We are asking exclusively for donations. So this is, is very much a nonprofit kind of thing. We're just hoping to raise money to help, you know, really recruit more foster families for our county. We are probably going to have, we're hoping to have hoops and booths set up at, down by the pavilion, which might include CASA. And I recently got a kiddo who had a CASA, and it's the most wonderful thing in the world to have a court-appointed special advocate for, for one of my kiddos. And, and so to promote that, our Heartland Gallery, which they could be able to put up a digital display of children who are already available for adoption in our region and county to, to get out some, some word about those kiddos. Maybe there might be a foster parent booth. I don't know if even you've heard of Angel Wings, which is housed in Mexico, that is a store, a free store of clothing for kids with, in foster care. So they would probably be able to have a booth there with us. And maybe some other things related to child abuse and neglect and that sort of thing to bring up some awareness for our community. So.
As long as the mayor, make a motion among the, they work with the administration. They approve their pavilion in the park for that day?
Second. We're going to have a motion in a second to approve this event along with no charge for the pavilion and the trail.
And you know that the date changed from September twenty-fourth.
And the date changed September twenty-fourth.
Is it available?
September twenty-fourth.
It is, according to Parks and Recreation, it's on the date that it was available on September twenty-fourth. And we've committed before for them to reserve it.
All right.
Any other discussion of the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is council concerns. And I'm going to lead off this evening and ask Daryl to come forward and visit a little bit with a concern that I have. He can share with you what's going on. It's a good concern.
The Alergy Department's got a new bucket truck in the budget this year. And the user who was trading in, we found out that the value of it, the trade-in was roughly around seven thousand dollars. But there's a small town in southern part of Missouri that would like the truck. They came and looked at the truck and their offer's ten thousand dollars for it. So it's kind of a win-win for both of us. We're getting more money than we could get out of the trade. And they're getting a truck that they know the history of. They're not going to a sale and just buying a truck.
And this really doesn't require council action? I'm just, I'm just, I wanted Daryl to come and tell you that, you know, we are thinking outside the box to maximize the value of it. And also at the same time, we're, we're also kind of trying to think of helping out smaller communities throughout the state that are going to be able to benefit from, from what we're going to be getting better.
Do we have a, is there like some warranty or something that we can guarantee for a while for them?
No.
So they buy it, that's as is, okay?
And they've been up to look at it?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, open the floor.
Good move.
Any other council members that have anything they'd like to bring to the council? That hadn't been addressed already?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I was coming down Tennyson Road today, and I'm not sure who needs this address to... Maybe come on, I don't know. But one of the inlets on that, along the roadway, all the concrete is busted out from around it.
Where at?
It's a fairly new street. The curb, the sidewalk, I mean, it's all busted and broke loose from the front of the inlet.
I know we've had some issues in the past with the road down there, so I'll, I'll take a look at it.
Yeah, probably wouldn't hurt to drive by and look at it, eh? It looks pretty bad.
Yeah, I think when the, I think when the road was originally constructed, there wasn't enough expansion, joints put in that road, and so we've had some...
I didn't know if somebody had it.
It seems like about every, every, it seems like about every year, we have some issues with, with, with the road down there. I'd have to take a look at it to see if, if that's a scenario or if it's something else. But we'll take a look at it and see what we can do to get it fixed.
Thank you.
Any other concerns? Now's the time. If we don't have any, then we'll, any further discussion, any further discussion on that? We do not have any need for ordinances or resolutions under the new council, so. And I do not have any appointments this evening. We'll move on, excuse me, move on to announcements. And for many of, for any of you who do not know, Retail Coach had a change. Walker Wright, who came and visited with us, has left their employ. And so they've appointed a couple of new representatives for our count. And they're coming up and will be in town on the nineteenth. That evening, we're inviting all of you to evening lunch there, dinner there at, at the bistro. And after that, then we'll do a, a quick tour of the, of the progress that's going on in the theater. Again, that will be at six o'clock on the nineteenth. If you have any questions or would you like to head count? If you have any questions or would you like to head count?
Meet at the bistro.
Meet at the bistro.
If you could, if you could just let me know by Monday, if you're not going to be able to make it, that would not...
Okay, let you know by Monday.
Otherwise, I'll assume that you'll be there. Sounds good.
I wanted to make a, Lindsey really wanted to see the bistro and the, and I was wondering if we could go ahead and invite her also to this, and she's a big part of what's happened there, too.
Love to have her. Okay. The, at your, each place this evening, I left four tickets for you for the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. I'd like, I would appreciate if you could pass those on and sell those for the event. It will be on May the 5th at 6:30 in the morning. We will have, the program will be talked by the folks that are in charge of Welcome Home Incorporated, which is a group in Columbia that is addressing veterans, homeless needs. And they, they're only, they also, they do temporary housing, but they're also trying to develop a, a community, a neighborhood type thing for, for veterans. So I think it'd be a good program. And again, it's, it's always just a great way for us to support the senior center. So, and that's where the proceeds, again, will go. So, anyway, with that, and yeah, if you'd just turn that, those dollars back to me when, when you've accomplished that. And again, I'm, it's not a, it's not a requirement, so if you don't sell, that's, that's fine. Okay. We're now, any other announcements?
I've got one real quick.
Go right ahead.
This Saturday night, the Presbyterian Manor, where I work at, is having a dinner and silent auction at the church next door, which is Presbyterian Church. It's for a cause that's, all the proceeds will go to is the residents that run out of money at the, at our manor, that these funds will help cover some of the costs of those folks living there.
What date did you say it was?
This Saturday night. Well, it's actually 4:00 to 7:00. So you can come and bid on items. They've got a lot of cool stuff, 4:00.
4:00.
If you want to take it and get with me, 20 bucks a head, I'll wait on you hand and foot all night.
Oh, I can do that. Atticure?
That's the most...
Atticure. I'll be chief for a bit.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm Lindsey. Councilman Cantwell, too? Well, I just wanted to say to you and Mr. Johnson and to Clay and the staff that I know, and Clay, I harassed him doing the election for the tax, and I know BJ sent out an email, but wanted to say thank, thank y'all for y'all's hard work and helping to pass this and the staff that worked on it, because I know they took their cruise, I know Clay got a lot from me, so. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. But I think the real thank you needs to go to the citizens.
Sure does.
And the voters, and again, it's up to us now to earn their confidence. And again, we, of course, we're very pleased to see that happen, and now we have to roll up our, our shirt sleeves and get to work. And we will, I will guarantee to the citizens, we will, in just a few months, continue to require and have another town hall meeting where they have a chance to come in and give their input on what we're going to do and where it's going to be located and so. Okay.
I just have one final quick announcement, something that'll get on your radar. As in years past, East of View will be invited to go to elective officials training with MML. I'm going to secure tickets for that. It's not until June 9th through the 10th, but we do need to register by the first or second week of May, so I'll be sending you some additional information in the next few weeks.
Good.
Okay. Very good. Without, do not have a need for executive session, so...
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Do you have a motion, second to adjourn? We sand adjourn.
Adjourn.
What's she doing?